Welcome to tonight's City Council work session for the city of Watertown. We will first establish a quorum by our city manager, Amanda Mack calling the role.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Holene.
Here.
Paulson.
Shuddy.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Phil Howard.
Here.
Quorum established. Now is the time for public comment. If anyone is here to speak on something that is not what we are going to be discussing at the work session, now is your time to do so. Seeing no one here for that, we'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion made by Councilman Shuddy? Excuse me, seconded by Councilman Danforth. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to the regular agenda, which is a discussion on the CACs addition zoning. What I am going to do to provide a little bit of framework for the discussion for the work session is we are going to separate the discussion into certain areas. We are going to first start by talking about the history of this addition. Then we are going to talk about the zoning issues of the addition. Then the infrastructure of the addition. And then we will have a discussion on the developer options of the addition. That's just a general framework. I do that partially for the council so that if you have questions as a council, we will limit them to, let's say if we are discussing the history of the addition, keep your questions on the history and not start moving on to, you know, what about roads or the marina or anything like that. Fair enough? Yeah. And I will say, at the council meeting, this is just a first reading. I have talked to everyone out there, but I wanted also on public record that this is a work session, which means that the work is being done by the council with the staff to get our questions answered and so that we gather more information. And this is done on special projects that we feel deem it, where we deem it worthy, where we really feel like we need to get a very thorough understanding of it. A work session happens very rarely. It is only on projects of significance. So right there, I want everyone who is concerned about this in the room and elsewhere to know that we do not do this lightly nor often. So we do feel that this is an important thing to get right. So the work session is for the council to get our answers and more information from our staff and to understand how we got where we are. So with that, we will go to our Public Works Director Heath Von Ie to tell us a little bit about the history of the CACs fourth addition. Or let's just say CACs addition, because we're not going to limit it, because the history goes on well before the proposed fourth.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So I'd be glad to walk through some background with the council and those in the room tonight. I've shared my screen to teams. I don't know if it's up on the board. It looks like it is on the board. And where I thought I'd start out with is the preliminary planning for this area that occurred back, as you can see on this diagram here, back in 2009. This was what was a revised master plan at the time to include all the CACs subdivision land. Hopefully, I'm zoomed in enough just to get some context of what we're looking at here. Of course, on the east side of this drawing of this preliminary plan is 33rd Street, and on the west side is 42nd Street. They both feed up to Highway 212 and are classified as major collectors as far as our street network is concerned. They don't, just to note, those two streets, they don't, they're considered major collectors because of their location and how they fall in a section line or half section lines. They don't necessarily meet the volume of traffic today to be a major collector, but by location, they are by default a major collector. So we can preserve those, that network, that grid network of major collectors throughout our street system in the community. So that's 33rd on the east, 42nd on the west. This segment here is primarily what the first addition of CACs subdivision included. Now, first edition had a couple of different modifications to it along the way, which then created CAC second addition with some modification of lots on the north side. CAC's third addition, again, some modification of lots, nothing major. So for the most part, CAC's first addition is everything to the east of fourth addition. That's under consideration here later tonight and at the next council meeting. The original plan, preliminary plan for this entire area, as you can see, included a single-family residential. A pretty good number of residential lots existed on this preliminary plan all the way out into this fourth addition area. I'll also pull up the proposed zoning at that time. You had some zoning, everything from R1 to R2 to R3. You can see is highlighted here on the plan by the color coding. The yellow is R1, the green is R2, and the orange or reddish color is R3 that was proposed. This was a proposed zoning back in 2006 was the date on this. This subdivision's obviously been in contemplation for quite a while now. The first addition has progressed to a point now where, I guess I didn't check to see what percent is built out, but all the streets are in, all the public infrastructure is in. 17th Avenue is built, 36th Street is built, and what was 19th Avenue is now called North Pelican Lane, I believe, is also constructed. 17th and 19th, of course, tie into the, what was the existing 33rd Street West, the road that leads up to Highway 212. And after the first addition was built out here recently, as within the last 12 to 16 months, the developer came forward with a new proposal. These preliminary plans are only good for so long, and once they time out, the developer has to come forth with a new development to go through the development process from the start all over again. And that's exactly what Mr. Horning did for the fourth addition. He brought forth a, find the document here, a concept plan, preliminary plan, PUD zoning and plating for what this now shows. This is the currently approved configuration for CAC's fourth addition. So you can see the difference from what was originally master planned for all these smaller, single-family, multifamily residential lots to what's approved now today. They went with PUD zoning so that they could accomplish some rural residential lots throughout this fourth addition, along with some single-family on the east side of the development up against, again, that first addition to the east. So this zoning, concept plan, prelim plan, zoning of PUD with rural, single-family residential, and the plating, again, have all occurred here in the last 12 to 16 months or so. I believe the final approval was in March with the zoning and plating for that PUD zoning district. And then now, before the council this evening, is a modification to that PUD plan. It doesn't seem to want to pull up for me for some reason. But essentially, in a nutshell, what they're proposing is to combine five or six of these lots, I think it's six of these lots down here in the southeast corner of fourth addition, into what would be a mixed-use PUD for high-density residential and some commercial with uses of a restaurant, a marina. Those are primarily the mixed uses that go along with the high-density residential. And that PUD, it ends up being a zoning amendment to convert it from this recently approved PUD for single-family residential to the proposed PUD of mixed use. I apologize, I'll try to pull this up here later in our discussion, see if I can get that one to open. And that, of course, went through the rezone process like any rezone through the community. Because the developer had already established the lots by plating this fourth addition, it was not required to go back through the whole planning process again. They didn't need to do a new concept plan, prelim plan, rezone, and plat. Because it was already platted, as shown right here, what this turned into was a rezone application. So the project has now gone through the process like any other rezone application throughout our community would. It goes to the Planning Commission for their recommendation for approval to the city council. And this one did pass by a split vote of four to three, recommending approval to the city council for the newly proposed mixed-use PUD zoning. Did I provide enough history there, Mayor? Is that?
Well, we will find out when I open it up for questions from the city council. City council, are there any questions regarding the history of this addition? Councilman Phil Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Heath, can you go back to the slides?
Certainly.
What, I'm looking at the first, second, and third. What is the, they were color-coded. What is the white or the blank area? Keep going back. Yeah, what is, what are we looking at there?
So these are open spaces due to the wetlands that exist. I believe in the first addition, this all is pretty well built out, exactly as you see here, because of the wetlands. And then in the fourth addition, some of this, of course, has been modified from what it was originally proposed to be with all the rural, single-family residential lots making up most of those wetland areas, which is something that the developer has to do, check off through the appropriate channels.
Thanks, Heath. Councilman Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Heath, how many lots were originally planned and how many lots are there now?
The lot number here today, I believe, was 52, as seen on the, 52 residential lots that are approved as the plat sits today. I couldn't tell you, I didn't do a count on here, but well over 52 lots existed on the original preliminary plan. Again, those were proposed to be R1, R2, and R3 throughout the fourth addition. This block alone, just looking at the numbering, had 57 lots just in the central part of the plat here, or the proposed plan. So there's maybe, you know, there's over 100 lots there easily.
Councilman Shuddy.
Yes, Heath, as far as the time, when this development started, would you be able to give us a timeframe from, what year did this roughly start, the development process on the first addition we're talking about?
So yes, and I'll have to rely on some of these documents to help me with that. So I apologize as I fumble through some of this. But it looks like the plat of first addition would have occurred in 2008. So that's when all the lots were established in the first addition in order to begin selling and developing those lots. That, of course, that timeline would have corresponded when the developer would have initiated the infrastructure improvements to start building out 17th Avenue, 19th Avenue, and 36th Street. I believe, for whatever reason, at that time, the development agreement had a rather extended duration on it. I think it was 10 years. 10 years, yeah. My senior planner, my city attorney are telling me my ear, it's 10 years was accurate. So that 10-year timeline then just came up here in 2018, 2019, where we go out and do inspections of those public improvements. We've worked with the developer and his contractor on completing the assurances of those public improvements through that first addition to this point. I believe there's a few punch list items left on those improvements, but for the most part, they're complete.
Thank you, Heath.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, I'd like to present this to Heath as well here. Heath, as we, you go back into the 2006 to 2009 timeframe there and the plans that were submitted at that time. What's our purpose in having those plans presented to and supplied to the city? That's my first question. Second question is that you had mentioned, as you've introduced this, you mentioned, I think it was 33rd and 42nd, I believe, as major collectors. If you could just take just two minutes and define for the public and us on this side, we start off with a residential road. What's the next step up from a residential road? What are those incrementals? Because I know we got collector streets and arterial major and minor arterials, et cetera. Could you just quick go through what those are so in our minds so we can see how that builds up from a general residential area to a more traffic-filled type structure?
Yeah, absolutely. So to your first question, Councilman Danforth, the why we receive these kind of documents, so that process that I rambled off a little while ago, that starts, and today's process starts with a concept plan. That's where a developer brings in, you know, their barren land, saying here's what we'd like to do with it. And the staff guide them through the requirements of what's meant to be and required to be in a concept plan. There are certain things they have to show in that concept plan. We recently modified those requirements so that it wasn't as big of a lift at that phase early on in the subdivision process. So the developer didn't have to spend quite as much in their engineering and those costs, you know, without having the project move forward some. So once they get through the concept plan phase, they then go to a preliminary plan phase. And the preliminary plan goes a little bit deeper dive in some of the details of the infrastructure design and things like that. And again, that's where the costs start to accrue all the more for the developer based on their engineering fees. The reason we do all that is simply, there's two steering documents that we use for development in the city, and that's the zoning ordinance and our subdivision regulations. They're chapters 21 and chapter 24 of the Watertown city codes. And those are the two general primary documents. And there's a lot of other subsidiary documents like our engineering design standards and things like that to come into play. But generally speaking, those are the two steering documents, along with our comprehensive land use plan. And at those phases is when the city staff, and then subsequently the boards, check off the development to make sure everything's in compliance with and in conformance with the regulations, and then also meeting the intent of things like the land use plan. And so that's what, why these, what was called a master plan at the time back in 2009, why those documents are submitted. We determine what infrastructure needs go into place by master planning. We determine how a proposed development plugs into the existing infrastructure, what kind of adverse impacts it might create. All those things are looked at and considered when we lay things out through the master planning process. Out of your second question, on the streets and their classifications, we generally have a handful of street classifications. One, starting with a local residential street we're all familiar with, that's, that our driveways are typically plugged into and we back out of each morning or pull into at the end of each workday. That's, those are our local residential streets. They're generally, as far as traffic volumes, as far as vehicles per day that you would see on residential street, are generally less than 500 vehicles per day. There are certain design criteria those residential streets are built to. Again, our engineering design standards determine what those are. We currently have just under a 40-foot back-accurbed street width requirement for residential street, for example. Then you get up into our collectors and arterials, and those are split two different ways. There's a minor and major collector, and there's a minor and major arterial. And both 33rd and 42nd are classified as major collectors. And again, those classifications come because of how they're geographically located. They don't meet the traffic count today for being a major collector. That would require they had over 5,000 vehicles per day on them. And they don't have that much traffic on them yet at this point. But because of where they're located, they are classified as major collectors. We want to preserve those corridors because of their geographic location and the development that occurs between them is likely going to generate enough traffic for them to need to be designed and preserved in a way that they can convey that much traffic. So that's all part of our transportation master planning that we do that's in relation to the development process and how we look at our road networks. And then you get up into our arterials. A minor arterial typically sees 10,000 vehicles a day or more, and then a major arterial is up to 15,000 or more. Some of our major arterials, of course, in town would be the highways, 81, 212, Highway 20, and things of that nature. Did that help answer your questions, Councilman?
Follow-up, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As we review, and I'm kind of old school here, I call it master plan, but as you referenced it, you know, our concept plans, preliminary plans, once they are in-house and we're looking at those, there's typically a lot of discussion that takes place about what we like or don't like from a planning standpoint all the way around. And things get moved a lot, and there's usually justification for what that is. And one of those big issues for us is always what's planned to go in there from a zoning and what could go in there then for that zoning. In this particular case, multifamily housing is the reference included in this. I don't believe there's any multifamily housing in any of the early documents, but had there been, there probably would have been discussion on where that's best fit into that development. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's correct. Just for a point of clarity, lower-density multifamily was part of the original proposal, but what I would call high-density residential was not part of the original, some of the original master planning.
Right. And actually, I was around when all this took place, and I remember the discussions that took place on a lot of this. But as we see with these plans, they would closely fit to what we would normally look to see for best business practice, so to speak, on how we do our zoning in regards to transitional zoning. But if there was something that didn't fit, we would generally work with the developer and say, here's what we're concerned with and why. And sometimes it might get moved or removed to settle upon a document, a plan that we're all working towards. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Through those reviews, those discussions happen frequently.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Phil Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Also to you, Heath, because I was involved when we just recently, or within the last couple of years, drafted, you know, the concept plan, you know, requirements. Now, you said that because it had already been platted, it wasn't required to go back with, for a revised concept plan. But I also remember that within the concept plan requirements, when there's certain major revisions that take place, a new concept plan is required to be resubmitted back through the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
But that was not required to be done here because it had been platted?
Correct, that's correct.
I guess I'll, it's probably a hypothetical question, but had that not been platted, would this have been a major revision to the original concept plan that would have required a, you know, approval again by the Planning Commission?
I guess to protect our city staff.
Maybe we're getting into a different area.
No, 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 I will allow the question. What I want to do is I want to protect our staff. Our staff is nonpartisan on this issue. They need to be nonpartisan. So to protect the, to protect our public work director's integrity, what I would do is rephrase the question to say, are there parameters established that would have made this considered to be a major revision? Not under, not, so take out your personal opinion.
Absolutely.
Are there parameters in place where we could judge this?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't being critical of what the staff had done. You were following your required procedures, and I'm not questioning that.
Sure.
So if you want to answer it in the context, the mayor put it, or like I say, it's a hypothetical question, I guess I would entertain, you know, oppose it that way.
Yeah, certainly. No, I can approach the question in that manner. The concept plan approvals and the preliminary plan approvals both have stipulations in them that would, that would trigger reapproval to go back through those processes. Change in density is one of those that would constitute a major change to go back through the concept planning process, which means that that concept plan would have had to go back to the Planning Commission for approval. Now, the preliminary plan, that's more at the administrative level, at the staff level, where we review that and go through the technical details of the prelim plan. But there are also criteria in there as well that would trigger a new prelim plan. But because the whole subdivision process had been completed, i.e. the plat has been approved, that did not trigger them to go back through those processes. So it is before the council now tonight as a simple rezone.
Follow-up?
Yes.
I know we're talking about the history, but I guess I'd like to ask a question regarding the future. Is there a, is, what's to the south and west? I mean, is there a fifth addition, or is this the end of that development out there?
This would be the completion of the CAC. This would be the completion of the CAC subdivision. To the direct southwest is already developed and there's a separate property owners to the west and to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further council questions on the history? Seeing none, we'll move on to the zoning issues. And in regards to this, it is our public works director's expertise and he will handle it. But he will discuss such things as transitional zones, buffer areas, difference, you know, R1 and commercial and things like that. So, Public Works Director Heath Van I.
Thank you. And again, I apologize, I'm only going to be as strong as my technology allows me to be here on this discussion. So, and our GIS mapping seems to be running very slow. I'd hope to pull that up and just to show the current zoning around that area. Give it just a little bit of time here. But generally speaking, you know, the, the term transitional zoning that the mayor referenced, of course, is, is part of the Euclidean zoning type that we've adopted here in Watertown where certain things are, are built and allowed to be built as far as land uses are concerned. And the theory is that as you develop and, and things are built and land is used, that it's at a transitional phasing where the least intrusive thing next to the next intrusive thing makes a logical progression as it gets more and more intrusive. So you typically don't see a single, single-family house right next to a heavy industrial area, for example. Not to say that doesn't ever happen, but that's the theory behind transitional zoning. You, you start at the most basic level of a single-family residence and the zoning that allows for that use. And you transition out into a multifamily like an R2, which allows for twin homes. And then an R3, which then progresses up into higher-density units like a six or eight plaques or up to an apartment. And then you get into your commercial uses. We have C1, 2, and 3, I think. But different commercial uses that are allowed. Some of those zones are just specific to certain geographic locations within the community. And others are specific to those commercial uses as they become more intrusive. And then you have your industrial zoning that, of course, allows for industrial manufacturing and industrial uses of that nature that extend out and are all the more intrusive with noise and dust and equipment and things of that nature. So if this lets me, I'll just zoom in here. But feel free to, to talk or ask any questions regarding our, our zoning practices. And I can help address those while I try to pull up the zoning map.
All right. Councilman Danforth?
May I have Matt or Heath? Could you guys read the paragraph that we had looked at earlier? To try to understand why we do the zoning the way we do, what, the purpose of zoning. There was a, I think that's a very informative paragraph. Matt, I think you had pulled that up if I remember right. If, if, Mayor, if that's okay, just to have him quick do that?
That would be fine.
People understand why we do what we do.
So the, the zoning ordinance, chapter 21 of the city code, right up in front of it identifies the purpose of that chapter of code. And in that section, it lists nine different purposes on why we go through a zoning process. Did you want me to pull this up on the screen, Councilman, or just read them off? So, for example, the, the first purpose is to assist in the implementation of the city's comprehensive land use plan, which in its entirety represents the foundation upon which this ordinance is based. The second item is to foster a harmonious, convenient, workable relationship among land uses. The third purpose is to promote the stability of existing land uses that conform with the land use plan and to protect them from inharmonious influences and harmful intrusions. The fourth idea or purpose is to ensure that the public and private lands ultimately are used for the purposes which are most appropriate and most beneficial from the standpoint of the community. Then we go on to cite preventing excessive population densities and overcrowding of the land with structures to foster a provision of adequate off-street parking and off-street truck loading facilities to facilitate the appropriate location of community facilities and institutions and to protect and enhance real estate values. And the final one, to safeguard and enhance the appearance of the city, including natural amenities. So those in a nutshell are the, kind of the guiding purposes behind our zoning ordinance and why we follow zoning practices.
Thank you. I know that the map is still being called up, but Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Heath, I, I, I know we adopt a comprehensive land use plan here within the last couple of years. Does this area support, or is a comprehensive land use plan, it support this type of, or allow this type of development that's being proposed?
The answer to that question is multifaceted, if I may step through that. The short answer for, for a single-family residential, yes, that's what the, the comprehensive land use plan shows for this area's residential use. Now, we've recently adopted what we call the CL district, the Commercial Lake District. And we have identified this area to be one of the areas that are, it essentially surrounds both lakes where, as identified, potential areas for the Commercial Lake District. So while the comprehensive land use plan shows us as residential use, we also have an adopted zoning district that allows for commercial lake use and identifies this as one of those possible areas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Heath, if this were to be rezoned CL, there's a lot less limitations on what a PUD brings to the city council. So if this was referred to as a CL district and rezoned, the surrounding neighbors would not know what was going on, if that's correct?
Yes, generally speaking, with any rezone, upon approval of that rezone, we have what are called permitted uses. And those permitted uses can occur on that zoned land at the owner's discretion. They can, they can put in there what they wish, as long as it's under the permitted uses and meets all of our building code requirements and, and building permitting processes. And there are a list of permitted uses for the CL district, just like every other district we have.
Follow up, Councilman? And just to note, Heath, we do have a map up now, if you wanted to reference it.
So in theory, the developer could come back and rezone this as a CL and do what they want if this is not approved?
The application for that rezone would follow the same processes as this PUD rezone and then have to be approved by the planning commission and city council.
Thank you. Any further questions on the zoning? Seeing none, moving on to the infrastructure involved in that area. Going back to our public works director Heath Van I. And infrastructure can be basically anything that you want to talk about. But perhaps the appropriate conversation would center somewhat upon the road, the road width, the construction of the road, and any other infrastructure concerns or issues out there. And just ask for some public leniency while we get some of this figured out. We're just having a little bit of computer issues with the man of the hour.
Manny, I request a control through Teams if you could give that to me. Is, would that be you to, to do that? And then if you could go back to that map for me, please? Thank you. So yeah, as far as the, the infrastructure is concerned, with each subdivision or development within the community, there are public infrastructure requirements that they have to meet. Of course, they need adequate water service to their proposed development, adequate sewer services. The street network has to meet our engineering design standards. And so anyway, all that was checked off and reviewed through the first phase of development where the streets that are built out there today are beat, are, are built to the residential street section requirements, which again, I mentioned earlier, is roughly 40-foot wide back a curb street. These standards have changed a little bit since 2009, when the subdivision initially went through. So it might not be exact, but generally speaking, they're going to have a specific amount of base course and pavement and width of street and all those things that come with how a street is built. With the fourth addition, I'll, I'll note that for 42nd Street, we did collect a fee from the developer for the future reconstruction of 42nd. Because there's two residential lots planted along there, we didn't want those two lots to get stuck with an assessed valuation against their properties for reconstructing 42nd. But the reason I touch on that is because for neither 33rd or 42nd is it in the city's near-term plan to reconstruct either one of those. With this level of residential traffic that's been generated, it's not substantial to necessarily trigger reconstructing that extensive amount of roadway. At some point, we as a community, you know, the city engineering office, we, we'd provide recommendation to do so. We've had a couple of developments happen recently. You have the Dollar General store here. You have the, the continued development of the CAC subdivision. You've got the new, newly approved fourth addition that's going to kick traffic out on a 42nd. We've tried to curb some of the construction traffic concerns on 42nd by requiring them to take the, the city streets, the 33rd and the existing city streets. The, the traffic generated by Dollar General, for example, is another concern. So at some point, all these things compile. And what would be beneficial at some point is to see a traffic impact study with recommendations on, you know, when 33rd and 42nd should be improved. But for now, the residential, the local traffic that are on them, they might not be the best roads around, but they're adequate to convey that amount of traffic. There's not a dire need to go out there tomorrow and reconstruct them to a wider width. Although, you know, that, that becomes a little subjective depending on how it's being used by pedestrians and things like that. But for the terms of this development, for CACs, they have met the requirements of building out their street network to support their development and have paid into some improvements for 42nd. And that's where it sits now today. Of course, the water sewer infrastructure, that's all reviewed and approved as well and is installed to sustain where they're at in their phase of development now today.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper?
Is 42nd going to go all the way to Highway 212?
Yeah, it currently does today.
Improved road?
It is, it's got a, what do you call it, blotter seal over it. It's, it's not a formally paved road, I don't believe. I think it's just a blotter seal where they've taken a gravel road and sprayed oil over it. That's a real generic summary of what's been done, but more or less that's what it is. So it's got a blotter seal over that road now today. And that was one of the township's concerns with the improved, increased traffic generation from this subdivision.
So that would be considered a collector road?
It is, yes.
And is that adequate for collector road?
No, but I'd also note that it's not in our jurisdiction yet at this point, except for half-width adjacent to the CAC subdivision. The rest is not in city limits.
Just so I may interrupt, I think it might be appropriate for those in watching, listening, including the mayor, if you could define collector road?
Ah, yes, exactly. So let me reference directly out of our design standards here. So a major collector street is a general term denoting a roadway designed or operating with the following characteristics. Some of those include, they would serve moderate volumes of traffic from local roads to arterials, i.e. the, the residential streets here all being fed out to the arterial of 212. The anticipated traffic volume is generally greater than 5,000 vehicles per day. The proposed speed limit comes into play. Typically, those are equal to or greater than 30 miles an hour for a major collector. They're typically continuous for two or more miles, but not always. Sometimes they're limited by physical constraints. These both, I believe, extend further north. Both 33rd and 42nd extend further north up into the, into the, again, non-contiguous, non-city property. Traffic control is generally provided, you know, by typical signage. On-street parking may be allowed, may not be allowed. Access locations are typically not allowed within 300 feet of the intersection of the arterial. So again, you're preserving access and connectivity to that arterial. So we restrict how many accesses can be on collectors. They generally serve predominantly multifamily residential, commercial, and/or industrial uses, meaning those are the typical uses you would see immediately adjacent to them. Multifamily residential, commercial, and industrial uses. That's where you, you go north on Highway 81, there's an apartment being built right now today. That'd be a multifamily residential with access onto a major arterial of the roadway. But because it's multifamily, you wouldn't allow that for single-family typically. Major collectors could transition into minor collectors as approved by the city engineer. And then the minor collectors have a few different criteria. Minor collectors are generally less than 5,000 vehicles today, typically 25 miles an hour or more. On-street parking, again, may or may not be allowed. Right-of-way widths are another consideration. Sometimes they're wider than the 66 feet typical width that we have in town. Sometimes they're greater, up to 80 feet right-of-way. And yeah, I guess that's in a nutshell.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. We're hearing a lot about the, the access or the outlets in this area. Are these roads or outlets the same or better than Stony Point that was just approved?
From a functional classification standpoint or road condition standpoint?
Functional classification and also what, which includes road width, I guess.
So from a functional classification standpoint, yes, the roads that feed Stony Point, those would all be residential with exception, I'd have to look at the, the map in that area. But at some point, South Lake Drive, of course, is a, probably, probably a minor, major collector. But those, trying to think of the name of it, is Prairie Hills Drive or, you know, that's a, that's a residential street. Now, that's what 17th, 19th, what those would be in here are residential. And then they plug into the major collectors of 33rd and 42nd.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper, I'll get back to you. I apologize. But as long as Councilman Paulson has the floor, I'll allow, I will allow a follow-up.
Okay, thank you. So there's more access points to this location than there would be the single access point to Stony Point? Is that correct?
As far as the street network is concerned?
Yes.
Yeah, in relation to how, how they both connect to the network. Stony Point has one road tying into Prairie Hills Drive or whatever it is, I think it's Prairie Hills Drive. And then this, this subdivision or this particular PUD would have 17th and North Pelican Drive, both leading out to 33rd at this point, the way they're built today. Subsequently to that, you'd have some extensions going west out to 42nd.
Councilman Tupper?
This is maybe more of an assumption than it is, you know, I hate to see the, the fact that 42nd's not going to be a paved road. We're going to end up with another half, half-road again. If I were to live in the new apartment complex and to expect me to come down 42nd, that's going to be a gravel road or a sealed road. Or come down 33rd and then cut across, I guess I know what I would do. I think it's going to cause a lot of traffic issues along 33rd. I don't, I, I just don't see 42nd being the main road into CAC's fourth, being unimproved, basically an unimproved road. Just a little rebuttal to, to Councilman Paulson's. If you look at this, it's 192, Stony Point's 42, if I remember right, so a lot less, no? Okay.
Thank you. We'll just remind the council that we just, we're not here to debate each other. So, thank you very much. Any further questions on the infrastructure? Councilman Vilhauer?
I get, thank you, Mayor. I guess I've got a.
I get, thank you, Mayor. I guess I've got a probably a follow-up or a similar question to what Councilman Tupper just said. S- uh so I guess i- if the the so we've got, what, seventeenth, eighteenth avenue, I think I heard uh that would feed back over to thirty third street?
Yeah, correct. Seventeenth Avenue and uh North Pelican Lane.
Okay, are 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 those roads designed in such a way that that w- because I I I feel too going back to thirty third street versus out to forty second street, you know, I I drove that stretch a couple times over the weekend, including this morning. So is, are the avenues or the dr- going back to thirty third street adequate to handle the traffic that we would anticipate? If this development were to take place?
Um physically, yes, th- they could handle that traffic. And this is where your discussion becomes more subjective is, you know, do you want that much traffic going through a single-family residential area?
Sure.
But physically, yes, the streets could handle.
And and that was my question.
Yeah, physi- physically and the width as well.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Um Councilman Shuddy had his hand up before you, Councilman Beeler. Councilman Shuddy?
Sorry, Bruce. Um so there's thirty third and what was the number, the the ad or the street on the to the west?
Forty second.
Just for, I'm sure there's others that are wondering, or there's been some talk about the potential of a of a street going pretty much straight north from this proposed development. What's the number of, I mean, it's not, what is that potential number of that street?
Thirty-eighth.
Thirty-eighth street?
Yeah.
And that is that's, that's not something that's really in the works in the very near future, as far as you can tell from current development, or?
It uh, so this this development, fourth addition of CACs um uh was required to put it a stub out for thirty eighth to go north. Uh and that's, that's what they showed in their um in their planning process, and as part of their plat, too, they platted that right-of-way for thirty eighth extension going north. But the subsequent build-out of thirty eighth past that is completely gonna be development-driven for whoever owns that land to the north of Mr. Hornings' land.
Okay, so yeah, so that ba- that would be, they've got their thirty eighth part done, but not the the north of there. That's not in any current development. There's nothing that's put forth to develop that northern.
Correct. Uh am I, am I, is my map up now?
Yes, we can see the map. Yep.
The uh thirty eighth extension uh will be built out by Mr. Horning in fourth addition, but then subsequent to that, the landlord of the north, whatever, whenever they wanna do something with their land related to development is when that would be triggered.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. This would go for uh Heath, uh in regards to, I just want some clarity on thirty third. You, so you do believe in its current state, thirty third would be able to handle the density of this addition? And and of course, you know, we have to look ahead to the additional development in that area. But as it exists today in the current state, you believe that that is sufficient to accommodate that traffic?
It it doesn't meet our uh design standards for a rural collector. We would have four-foot shoulders on it if it were to be built to meet those. And I believe this is a straight twenty-four-foot wide street section, so it does have the two twelve-foot lanes as required, but it doesn't have the four-foot shoulders that would be required to meet our design standards. Um so again, I'll go back to uh physically, can the road handle more car traffic? Yes. Um it's just, you know, at some point when when those other triggers come into play, like the pedestrian use, for example. Uh you know, I understand at times there's pedestrians on this route heading up to Dollar General. I I could see why there would be. Uh but then then other improvements like pathway, uh this part of our city's uh pathway master plan would come into play. Not necessarily widening the road so they had a shoulder to walk on. You'd you'd probably take a different stance with that and recommend extending the pathway up to that, up to two highway two twelve. So it it's really be- because that road, thirty third is this one road of our network of a long list of capital improvement plan needs in our street network. It's not high on that priority list right now, is what I would say.
Councilman Beeler asked for a follow-up, and then we'll go to Councilman Tupper after that. Councilman Beeler?
Yeah, just a cou- couple of, if I could, Mayor, please, thank you. Um the the next thing, I guess, Heath, would the current right-of-way accommodate any changes that would be needed for this to include potentially a walking area or a trail area?
Um from my understanding, uh the east half of the roadway is not uh annexed, is that correct, Brandy? Uh thirty third, east half is not annexed yet? So we would establish the full width of the right-of-way at the time of annexation of that easterly property. So currently today, whatever we did would have to be on the west half, and I assume that that west half, yes, the width is probably there, but there might be a lot of physical constraints in the way um that would have to be looked into.
If I might, Mayor, thank you. Um also, the next question, have we we approached the DOT uh at all in regards to ingress and egress from two twelve with this additional density and density that certainly could come beyond this?
No, I have not personally had any discussions with the DOT on this. Um I don't know, Brandy, if you haven't, haven't, we have not put any of those requirements onto the developer yet at this point either.
Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
So thirty eighth would come out where at Heath? At which street?
So thirty eighth ties into uh seventeenth. Uh again, I apologize for the map generation being slow, but it extends north from seventeenth and then would tie in up uh on highway two twelve. There's some existing or very recent development that happened along two twelve. I think it's a seed cleaning uh place facility there. Uh so thirty third, we did require them to preserve an area of their property for thirty third to connect to highway two twelve at an existing approach off of highway two twelve.
So so thirty eighth would come up to seventeenth, you said? So in all reality, that would be the main portion of traffic from this addition to go east over to thirty third.
Yeah, thirty or, excuse me, thirty eighth would tee into seventeenth, as shown right here.
Then you'd go through that residential district over to thirty third and then north. I spent a little time on on thirty third, both early this morning and and Saturday afternoon and and just sat and counted cars. In in a half an hour this morning, there was ninety-seven cars that used that intersection. And Saturday afternoon at a little after five, there was uh forty, excuse me, ninety-four cars, and there was uh forty-seven on Saturday afternoon. I get many complaints from people that live either out to the lake or west side of Watertown that since that addition's been put in out there, that that intersection's very dangerous now. And I think if you look back at police reports, we'll we'll see a lot of the uh issues with that intersection, so I I really think we need to do a little traffic study on that before we move too far forward, so thank you.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh basically, you just kinda answered my question with when Bruce had asked you, but the pedestrian traffic is, I'm aware of as well, that I've been made aware, too, that the pedestrian traffic is one thing to really keep in mind, I believe, in the near future with or without this new development. Um that's a, it's a major concern for that, from going to Dollar General to the lake uh for that development, so I just wanted to make sure we keep that on the radar.
Okay, just to let everyone know, we've got Councilman Paulson, then Councilman Beeler, then Councilman Danforth, so Councilman Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I do it kind of too s- easy.
Easy, gr- granted.
Yep. Um Heath has nineteenth street east ever re- has that ever, how do I wanna word this, um stopped us from developing east of nineteenth street, even though that that is a half-road, sorry, fourteenth avenue?
Councilman, I would request that the questions be specific. I mean, if you can, if you can cite an example where that is directly in correlation to the roads in question with the CAC, then I will allow it, but otherwise, otherwise you're talking speculation.
Is a half-road, and that's why I'm asking.
Okay. As a half-road?
Yes.
Okay.
Fourteenth Avenue is a half-road that currently exists in town, and I'm asking if that has ever prevented development east of nineteenth street from happening.
Okay, as a half-road, yep. Okay, I will grant that.
Um I'm not quite pinpointing in my mind the location that you're talking about, uh Councilman Paulson. Could you expand on that a little bit? Which?
Um nineteenth avenue, like the northeast corner of town. Fourteenth Ave-
Nineteenth Street, yes.
Fourteenth Avenue to the east of nineteenth street.
Oh, I got you, yeah. That we just reconstructed a year or two ago, yeah. Um no, there's been, there's been development allowed to the east of there. Uh the uh I forget the names now. It's been a couple years since we've worked with them, but the Prairie Haven, Prairie 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 View, Prairie View subdivision and uh similar subdivisions have gone up out there.
And that includes there's some multifamily in that as well?
Correct.
Okay, and then eh the the DOT controls all two twelve intersections, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh question for Heath again. Um if I would assume the city would bear any costs associated with any changes that we'd make to thirty third. I I'm sure we would. Um and I would ask how that would fit in our priorities from our budgetary standpoint. I mean, is that I I don't, I don't know if there's been any plan to do any cha- make any changes out there and how would that af- I I guess how would that affect our budget moving forward, too?
Well, I guess uh Councilman Beeler, to your question whether the city would participate financially, I I think isn't necessarily a a slam dunk conclusion. I mean, there are uh the the conventional or traditional means of going through an assessment process for those improvements. Uh property owners on both sides of the roadway would be assessed their prorated share of the cost for expanding or rebuilding that street. Um that's not to say that there aren't streets like this in town where the city's just taking onus of the reconstruction of them and have done it on their own, at their own cost. Um I haven't put any numbers to what that would cost to rebuild thirty third, so I I wouldn't wanna speak to that off the top of my head, but it would be a significant, you know, project in our CIP. Uh there's no doubt in that.
Follow-up, Councilman?
Yeah, thanks. Uh Heath, I think we'd have a hell of a time getting those folks on the west side of thirty third to pony up for additional char- costs for that road, and there's really nobody to the east. So I I don't know how we would get around that.
I would say, let's rephrase it to just a question, which is, how many people would possibly be impacted as far as helping to pay for the road?
The uh, so all these these individual lots here uh would be part of an assessment, again, anybody immediately adjacent to or uh realizing benefit uh to the reconstruction of a property that they're to the right-of-way that they're adjacent to. However, I would say that on the east side, these properties could also be assessed. Now, they can't be formally charged or or build out that assessment until they are in the city. But properties that are outside the city limits, if we were to build this out, we could assess those properties, and that assessment would sit there on hold until a point in time when that property was annexed into the city.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Um couple questions. Uh thirty eighth, as it's referenced on here, I'm not sure who owns that land, but if and when that ever gets developed, is thirty eighth a requirement of that development? I mean, is it absolutely going in no matter what?
Correct. Uh so we, through the development review process for this barren land, um we would reference our transportation master plan, and in there, we have identified thirty eighth as uh another collector route tying into highway two twelve. So that would be a requirement for them to um preserve that corridor in their development.
Okay. Uh and then just to piggyback off of uh what uh Councilman Paulson had referenced in regards to fourteenth avenue, so I just in my mind get an understanding of a of a given road, that fourteenth avenue northeast, is that a minor collector? Or is that just a residential?
That is a currently, and I'm guessing because of its half-street status, is identified as a local street, is all.
What's its intent?
Uh the long range, I'm sure, would have it being a uh major collector.
Major collector.
If, when you get west to nineteenth, that's exactly what it is, is a major collector.
So it would be a continuation to the east?
Correct.
And then and in that area, just so that we understand now, I know there's a bike path along that, but um are there any high-density concentrations back over in that area yet that would even come close to mimicking this that you're aware of?
Um.
Again, I'm trying to understand traffic, because we can see that against that road, and we know why it's a half-road, because it's county on the north.
I mean, there are some multifamily units back there. I guess, I don't know off the top of my head, the number of units there are in in those, but uh are there any two-hundred-unit facilities back there? Not to my knowledge, there there's, I don't know, twenty to fifty, maybe at most, I'm I'm guessing.
Okay.
Uh excuse me. Uh Councilman Villahauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh we're still talking infrastructure, right?
Yes.
Well, can you tell me, Heath, uh I I guess I'll direct it to you, and maybe it's goes to our uh park uh superintendent? Wha- what are the requirements and the related plans relative to uh park space, uh bike trails, et cetera? Cause I know that came up as a topic of conversation in the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, so that's a gr- that's a great question. I haven't touched on that at all, but through that development process, one of the check-offs that the developer has to go through is uh parkland dedication. And that parkland dedication is formally approved by the uh the park board. And then those plans are subsequently carried out through the the planning commission and council approvals. So for this area, for CAC subdivision, uh in in lieu of providing a park place, uh the developers committed land set aside for uh part of the path um recreational trail expansion through this area. And again, as we got through the the ten-year build-out uh development agreement, that was one of the things just last summer that that sparked some interest as the developers grading out the pathway that he was committed to do in that first phase. Um and then it's subsequently meant to tie into the fourth addition and extend all the way west uh through that phase of the subdivision as well. So there's not a park place out here, there's a a pathway dedication and grading to accommodate a future pathway.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Mayor. A follow-up to that. Wh- where is, uh uh I understand what you're saying about uh no no park being planned out here. Where is the closest park then to this proposed development?
Uh if I recall from prior discussions, I I think there's one to the north. Brandy, I don't know if you can point to that on the screen or not, but I believe there's one in the in the subdivision to the north of CACs.
Yeah, there's one of the, I'm sorry, Heath, Terry Kelly, Mayor, if I can?
Yes, please. Thank you for being here.
This is our.
Yes, um we both have both of the north and and to the east, Pelican View Estates um and Mallard Cove. We have two, and Brandy's on two, I think, within our our park area plan, they're both between a quarter and a half mile from the first addition of CAC. So when we're talking fourth, we're probably at close to three-quarters to a full mile, but there are two, Mallard Cove and uh Pelican View Estates do have an existing park park property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Just for the record, anyone watching or in attendance here, that is our director of the Parks and Recreation of Watertown, Terry Kelly. Thank you very much for being here, Terry. So um any further questions on the infrastructure? Councilman Danforth?
Maybe, I don't know if it's infrastructure or not, but you know, we have, we have concentrated, and I think understandably and rightfully, on on traffic concerns, cause that's something that once we once we fall out of uh um and we get development around it, we fall out of good practices, and we live with that for a long time, and and that's, so that's a big concern. But the other side of this becomes in our zoning, becomes the visual aspects of things, and this this property is, I believe, at least.
It I I I I'm sorry, but I've had to interrupt other people. This is for questions. If you're going to comment upon your attitude on the.
Nope, it's not attitude, it's about requirement.
Well, okay, the
It's.
Then I would suggest a a question, because your time for commenting or anything like that will be at the actual council hearing.
Right. I'm asking, the question is, is we have single-family housing, and we're gonna have structures here that are going to be four stories high, up to fifty-five feet high, and so part of our consideration needs to be that proximity. And I appreciate it, Mayor, but that's, it isn't my opinion, it's our rules. And my question then becomes, as us for consideration, is, we haven't even talked about that yet. And is that part of our discussion that we need to have at some point? As to, I have a single-family home here, and I've got a four-story apartment building as a next-door neighbor, which part of, going back to what Heath had read, as far as our purpose of our zoning, was to protect some of that. So that is a consideration that does need to get talked about.
And thank you for that, Councilman, and I just wanted to specify part of where I was coming from, and I want to apologize to the council, I tried to make it clear to the people in attendance what tonight's or today's session is about, but to the council, this was just to ask questions to the staff, and that's why I had to interrupt. When I thought it was getting away from the questions, uh, there is nothing intended by that, but at the actual council meeting is where there is council discussion. And that's why I wanted to just specify the difference and keep the integrity of the work session versus the integrity of a council session, that's why. And I may be wrong, and you can call me out on that, and if anyone does have a point of order, you can say point of order, I have the right to say this, you sure can. But at a work session, I try to limit it to just the questions involved. Any further questions on the infrastructure? So I, I thank the council for indulging me on that, and I hope that, uh, my motivation was clear, so thank you. Uh, any further questions on the infrastructure? Councilman Paulson?
I guess, to, to Councilman Danforth's point, I'm not trying to start a debate, but it.
And I will not let you.
No. Um, can Stony Point have sixty-foot buildings or fifty-five-foot buildings as well?
Uh, that, I will, only if that question is addressed to our public works director, this is not, um, the, I, I will have to call that out of order.
That, why?
You can, you can ask our public works director.
I would direct it towards him.
Apologize, could you repeat that, please, Councilman Paulson?
To Councilman Danforth's point, can Stony Point have fifty-five or sixty-foot tall buildings?
Yes, that's correct, as a, as a point of, uh, their, their, uh, development and zoning that was approved for that structure, yes.
All right, thank you. Any further questions on the infrastructure? All right, we have about ten minutes on just developers, the dis, developer aspect. And with this, I'm, guess I'm looking for an understanding both among council and the public as far as what the city's role is in deciding what a developer can and cannot do on the land that he or she owns. All right, we will go back to our public works director, Heath Von I.
Um, and I apologize, Mayor, if you could provide a little more context for me on that one, I'd appreciate it.
I guess, um, the question is, I will, I would just speak personally, um, with a lot of the questions that were brought to me from people concerned about this issue at the CACs addition, a lot of them were asking, wh, you know, why is the city allowing more apartments? Well, that's not really our decision to make. That is the developer's decision to make, as is a marina or a restaurant or anything like that. I guess I want, just so that people can understand where the city is limited, we don't make those decisions. Uh, but the developer does, and there are reasons for that, and those are stipulated by law, and I guess I wanted a little bit more of an underst, you know, just to make that clear, so everything is out in the open on that, I guess is what I was looking for, but I'd be open for council input on that as well.
I understand that now, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so generally speaking, I was able to pull up the, the planned unit development that's proposed here today, I've, I've shared that to teams, um, looks like it's on the screen here too. So, you know, we, we've recently approved, uh, planned unit development for rural, single-family residential, that's what the developer at the time wanted to and anticipated, uh, uh, to build out, you know, on his land. Uh, so that was, the application was brought forth and processed and met all the criteria that it needed to and, uh, received all the approvals that it's needed to thus far. Uh, and it has an approved plat for that land. So he can now go out and sell those single-family rural residential lots out in that fourth addition and obtain building permits. And he's also required to then build the, the infrastructure to sustain that development. Now, like, like they do from time to time, plans have shifted where he's got another developer interested in a handful of his lots and would like to propose this higher-density, uh, apartment use type of residential out to accommodate, uh, you know, some residential, some more residential housing out along Lake Pelican than what those single-family rural residential lots would have allowed for. So there, you know, just becomes a, a, a matter of, um, subjectivity on what, what people feel is right to do with the land in these areas and what they want to do and put their money into and invest into in these areas. Uh, not at all driven by the city, uh, you know, there's times when the, the city's economic development arm helps bring business to town, but we, the city, aren't in the business of developing per se, uh, you know, nobody asked, uh, developer to bring apartments to Lake Pelican specifically from the city. Now, that doesn't mean there wasn't interest out there in the development world that they felt it was worth their time and energy and money to bring a proposal like this forward. So that's generally how these things, uh, transpire. Um, and by circumstance, this one just happens to be right on the heels of what was just recently approved for single-family residential. And is now being looked at differently, but has to be vetted through the public process as we are, um, doing as we speak and as we'll continue to do in the first reading tonight and the second reading here in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions in regards from that developer's aspect of what a developer may or may not choose to do? All right. I will open it up to the council to anything off the topics that I had chosen from the frameworks. Councilman Villhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and maybe this question's going to be out of bounds, if so, uh, uh, tell me, but I, I guess I'll, I'd probably address this to our city attorney. I, I know a lot has been said, and, a, 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 a lot has been said about the covenants that were in place on the first three, uh, phases of CAC. And I know the planning commission passed it subject to, and I'm not quite, this work is fuzzy in my mind, subject to a covenant of some sort being in place on the fourth addition. Matt, can, can you address that? I mean, first of all, do the covenants on the first three, uh, additions have any bearing on the fourth addition? And then what's, what kind of covenant is expected or required by the planning commission on the fourth addition?
Thank you very much, Councilman. I will definitely allow that question, it was definitely on the minds of a lot of the residents out there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Uh, to your second question first, the covenants that were in place on additions one through three do not apply to the fourth addition. So they only apply to the legal description that's indicated on the covenants, and so those do not apply. Now, the covenants that were, uh, submitted with the, uh, PUD plan that was approved for the fourth addition, uh, would not allow for this, uh, the proposed use under this PUD plan. So what the plan commission said is essentially, uh, they, they gave their approval contingent on the city receiving a copy of the new covenants that would allow for the use. Now, covenants are, are not required to be submitted for, uh, in P, uh, in the PUD plan process, but if they have them, the city requests them, and they were submitted as part of this process. Uh, covenants are purely a matter of civil contract between the property owners. And, uh, in this case, uh, because Mr. Horning is currently the property owner of record of the entire fourth addition, uh, those, uh, those, uh, covenants can presumably be, be changed at, at will, uh, of, of Mr. Horning, at the will of Mr. Horning.
Uh, Public Works Director Heath Von I has something to add?
Yeah, I'd maybe just paint that a little bit different light to where really the, the amendment of the fourth edition covenants were, were a housekeeping item because it's written in there similarly to the first through third editions, it's for single-family residential only. So it was a housekeeping item that the planning commission shed light on for the developer to make sure he cleans that up before allowing these high-density residential uses.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Paulson, did you, no? All right, any other questions, uh, any topic? All right, are there any items for future agendas, future work sessions? Okay, before I close the work session, Councilman Beeler, did you have something? Yes, I just want to remind everyone, there are people who are showing up now who have not been at the work session. There, and I talked to the group that was here prior to this, the work session was for the council, for all of us elected officials, to get as much information as what we could possibly get about the background, the history, the infrastructure, everything that we could, the legality of what's going on out here, so that we can make as informed of a decision as what we, that, as what is possible. And I hope that over the last hour and a half, you, everyone in attendance or watching this online can respect the process and the time that we took. I want to reiterate, we do not do this for any topic, in fact, we very, very rarely do it for any topic. So we are taking this very seriously to truly understand this. This is not a public hearing. The public hearing is actually not even going to be to tonight's council agenda. The item on tonight's council is going to be a first hearing, but I, a first reading, but I do understand that there are a lot of people here who wanted to be heard and expect it to be heard, so I will allow some comments, but I just ask, and I will reiterate that's at the next council meeting, so I will not be redundant myself, but just say, I will stipulate the rules at the council meeting that will happen next, this was just for council information. And I hope that at least those who are in attendance who watch this or can go back and watch this can respect the time and effort and the deliberation that the entire council and our staff has put into this, and this is, none of this was done lightly, so I thank you for your time. We will be back in about eight minutes to begin our council meeting, and I do want to say, for everyone in attendance, I want to respect your time as well. And one of the ways that we can respect your time is I will move this agenda item up to the first item on the agenda. So that you can get home and eat dinner with your families and all of that, so I want to respect your time just as we would a, ask you to respect ours. So, uh, thank you very much for understanding all that, you'll hear some of that at the council meeting in about ten minutes. With that, seeing no further business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay, motion carries. See you in about seven, eight minutes.